I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I know everybody's anxious to get back out and get some yard work done today. So we'll keep moving here on those activity reports since a lot of meetings have been canceled. We were supposed to have a Stearns County meeting, but that got canceled. And I'll just ask the torch off to Councilmember LeBeau.
I had a park and tree board meeting, and that's it.
That's it. Councilmember Hersberg way down there.
I think we had an emergency management meeting two weeks ago or on Friday.
We had a special council meeting, yep. That's correct, thank you. Councilmember Enke.
I don't have any. I had to miss that special meeting because of a court hearing that came up, but other than that, nothing for me.
Okay, Councilmember Gilmore.
Park and tree in the special council.
All right, thank you. We have some department head reports. First up, Belinda.
We have had two COVID-19 emergency loan applications that have gone through and been approved. No other interest thus far coming our way. The 90-day deferral on the revolving loans is coming close to an end. I gave everyone three monthly payments, so each date is just a little bit different. The 30-day extension for the water bill due date has passed. The 30 days ended June 1st, so June 2nd they were charged a late fee. I only had 71 that were charged a late fee compared to the normal of 175.
Oh.
That did change it. The council also had decided not to do shut-offs this quarter, so those bills, if left unpaid, would just roll into second quarter and potentially be shut off in August if not paid. City Hall, motor vehicle end of things continues to be incredibly busy. They are out the door all day long. The girls are struggling. Kristen's at the counter all day with motor vehicles, so social media I'm sure has taken a little bit of a hit. They're having trouble completing the daily books, the dealer work, some of those items. We held a construction meeting on the second phase of the community apartments. And we just got word from the league today that there is a city emergency preparedness plan that will be due by June 29th. They're gonna give us guidance on June 15th or on or about that timeframe. Hopefully, the one we did for motor vehicle will suffice, but we'll have to see what our deadlines state.
Okay. With the line out the door, are they out there very long? Just, you know, concerned with heat and thing?
Well, we've been able to get most of them in inside. You know, I think the normal wait time is probably a half hour. Jen and I are trying to kind of go through the line and make sure, A, they have everything filled out they need, or they have all the documents they need, so we can get them back in here to a table to start filling out their paperwork, and then get back in line so they don't wait all the way up there and then... But people are being very patient.
Any other questions?
Is this still a lot of catch-up room when we were closed?
Well, I think it's a combination of things. It's the real IDs take a very long time, and there's a lot of people trying to get them. You know, the average timeline on helping somebody with real ID is probably about 30 minutes. The shutdown certainly didn't help the situation. And now you've got a lot of DMVs that are open by appointment only, and those appointments might be booked out till the end of July. I had someone in today from Owatonna.
Oh, my goodness.
Because they could not get in anywhere else. So we certainly have a lot of people coming just because we are walk-in. But yeah, I think there's a lot of factors. The real ID is gonna be around. That's gonna be bogging us down for some time now. It's gonna continue for quite a while.
And that got extended?
It got extended to October of 2021. I don't know how many people have that accomplished at this point. At one time, there was like, I think they were up to maybe 10% or 12% of Minnesotans had one. So we have a long ways to go on them. But they're averaging probably, would she just tell me, 30, 30-some driver's license a day? 38, I think, is the average a day?
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anything else? How's the audio, Bill? Are you able to hear?
Bill, can you hear us okay?
I can hear Belinda really well. Other people varies on the microphones. I don't, I don't know why, but sometimes it's not too clear.
Okay. We'll have to remember to speak directly into the mic if we can. All right. Thank you. Then Ron.
Okay, thank you. First of all, out at the airport, the fly-in, remember, is August 9th. And as of today, it has not been canceled. The majority of them around, I believe, have been. And so if it does go, I believe we are going to see a very tremendous crowd out there. Also out there is the hangars. They're nearing completion. I believe we're due to start filling them on July 1st. We're working on all the contracts right now, of which I've got six of the eight already full. And looking at, very likely, they will all be full. As it was noted before, we did have a park board meeting. Just to note, the concert in the parks will start on July the 2nd. The fishing pier is on site. We did meet with the DNR out there, and we will start assembling that tomorrow. Splash pad is open, as you can see, along with all the new playground equipment. We did have quite a few comments out there, and as you can see, it is being utilized quite heavily, as is with this kind of weather. The beach did have quite a few users over the last few days, too. Let's see, crack ceiling, we approved that several months ago, and that where the crew will be in town next week. I would also like to remind residents again that if you do have a tree overhanging a sidewalk, if you would please trim it up, or we will be going around in the near future inspecting and sending letters out on that also. Also, a spring cleanup, July the 25th. We did confirm with the county, the household hazardous waste unit will be here. They have started that, and that will be up at the township hall or the hockey center parking lot. And there's also an environmental board meeting on Thursday night, so... This is all I have.
Okay. With the gas line break, anything new from that? They're still sorting that out?
They were doing the final work on it today, and I believe they will have it all.
Okay.
I think our emergency services and the fire department did a very good job taking care of it.
Probably needed a few more barricades and some help to keep traffic.
I think we had enough people. But, yeah.
All right. So we're gonna start on the fourth T-hanger pretty soon?
We'll have to get this one paid for first.
Okay. All right, anything else for Ron? Chief?
Thank you. Not a whole lot to report on. We are still in the process of getting Officer O'Brien and Officer Heck up to speed and trained. We will be moving into kind of their third phase here at the end of this week. We're still on, on a timeline to have them out by the end of July, early August, out on their own. I spoke with the school district here probably a week or two ago. I spoke with Superintendent Bullard. They're interested in keeping the contract the same as what we had this last year. I think both of us are of the mindset that we'd like to see it grow, but unfortunately, at the end of this year, we saw the wheels kind of fall off again with COVID-19. So we were both on the same mindset that we'll keep things as they are with the two guys in there. I think we talked about this one other time. We do have two of the three portable, or not portable signs, but speed signs that are up now around town. We currently have had the one sitting down on Washburn Avenue for a while now. We, we now have access to be able to control those signs remotely over the internet. I was able to actually pull a report here before I came in, just to kind of give you an idea where things are at from the last week. Gives us an idea of the average speeds, the low speeds, you know, kind of a vehicle count that we're seeing in any given day. So for Washburn Avenue, the highest speed that that sign's recorded is 33 miles an hour. The average on that street, and for those that don't know where it is, it's between Main Street and First Street on Washburn Avenue. The average speed actually on that road is 19 miles an hour. And then Lake Avenue's a little bit different. Highest speed on that road is 58 miles an hour.
Oh, I saw that picture on the internet once.
Speed to beat the 58?
Yeah.
Arcade game?
Yep.
I don't, I think I see one speed or one, one hour out of the day where the average or the max speed was like 39 miles an hour. Otherwise, everything else, their max speeds on that street have been over 40 miles an hour. 58 this last week was the highest. But interestingly enough, the average speed on that road is actually 30 miles an hour. And then the, the 85% speed is 34. So we have some that are going really fast, but it looks like the majority of the people are minding their, their Ps and Qs out there. And just for your information, last, last week, June 1st to the 7th, the sign tallied 10,434 vehicles on Lake Avenue, and those are just northbound vehicles. It's not picking up any of the southbound traffic. So I think it'll be interesting, especially once we can get that sign out on Highway 55, to kind of see what our numbers and those counts are as we move forward. So if anybody's got problem spots, I would encourage them to get ahold of us or Public Works, so we can get that sign, our portable sign moved, and kind of tally what we have for, you know, maybe some problem areas around town.
Do you have any information, when I was down by Goodyear, on Old 23?
I did not pull that. I do not believe the signs were actually active at that point to where we could pull that data back out, so...
That would've been an interesting one, too.
We can put it back there and see. So that's all I got.
Anything else?
Paul, I'm just curious, from April to May, you went from 212 calls to 401 with a 200% increase in traffic stops. Any idea what might be driving that, or?
From April to May?
Yeah.
Well, two things. One, in May, we started, you know, we started back into TZD, doing TZD again. But with COVID-19, staff was really encouraged to monitor what they were, were not, you know, stopping. So month of March and April, we really kind of pick and chose what we did. Also, come May, Officer Fred started back up, as well as pretty much having a full complement of, you know, what's being filled. So the new guys were, would've been out there more and getting them more involved with that side of things, so...
So that doesn't mean that things have just gotten that much crazier?
I wouldn't say they've gotten crazier. I will tell you that traffic is picking up. March, March and April, I've never seen it that slow in 22 years with traffic. It is starting to pick up some, so as more people are out and about moving, you know, we're gonna be a little more active. But I wouldn't say it's crazy, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we have the consent agenda before us, which include the minutes from the one meeting there, the May park and tree board meeting, and the vouchers on page two totaling $1,021,483.53.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Hersberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the consent agenda discussion. In favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried. All right, new business, irrigation pump house roof, Ron?
Yes, thank you. Irrigation building out on the east end of the ponds where we have all of our pumps and motors, et cetera. Building was built in 1983. Did get a new roof roughly about 20 years, so this roof, current roof on it is about 20 years also. We did get several quotes here. The first is from the local, from YETI, and that is for a 60-mil liner on there, and it would have a grate on it. Right now, this is a flat roof, and I believe that is the problem out there. Continually water, so that problem would be corrected. The other options are from West Central, and his first two options are just a different color, is all it is. And his third option is if we would want to try and repair it. YETI did give us also a number. He said $100 an hour if we want to try and repair it, but he said there's absolutely no guarantee that we would find it or if it would hold. Public Works did look at this, and they did recommend going with the YETI construction at 13-9.
Can I make a motion to approve the quote from YETI Construction, an amount of $13,900 for the roof on the irrigation pump house?
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Enke to approve the quote from YETI Construction, an amount of $13,900. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Then storm spotters, Mr. Fred.
So we've added some new storm spotters. There's been, some of the past are no longer interested in doing it, so we're just asking for approval to approve those people, so that if we do get severe weather this summer, it's not just me out there.
Okay, we got John Culsor, Barry Gutwold, Aaron Dahlinger, Kevin Parks, Angela Messick, and Phil Bailey.
I'll make the motion to approve John Culsor, Aaron Dahlinger, Angela Messick, Barry Gutwold, Kevin Parks, and Phil Bailey as 2020 storm spotters.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hersberg to approve those names as the 2020 storm spotters. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. And the CARES Act, we got, out of this, we're getting possibly some grants for the airport. Ron?
Thank you. Yes, the CARES Act that was passed back in March did include $10 billion for eligible U.S. airports. Some of that did trickle down to our local general aviation. And then the amount, as you can see here, $30,000 is allocated for the City of Painesville Municipal Airport. And it will include such items as lost fuel sales, if we've had any. I'm glad to say, really, we haven't. Our fuels there, sales have remained very steady. Utility bills, salaries, et cetera. The biggest item here is the fuel facility, which is being included, which I know we are looking at upgrading ours. I know that we'll take care of a lot of it, but I believe this is also for snow plowing or any other issue like that. And I don't believe in four years we will have any trouble utilizing $30,000. There is a state portion and a federal portion of this, so they both need to be submitted, but it is for the same grant. Chuck, I don't know if you've heard any more about it, or?
That pretty much covers exactly what I was looking for.
Initially, there was some concern that this would affect the $20,000 that we get annually, but as you can see in here, it does not. It will supplement that.
Can I make a motion to approve the state CARES Act grant?
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the state CARES grant. Discussion?
I'm assuming this wasn't affected by the legislation the president signed last week? Nothing we know of?
No.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the federal CARES Act grant.
I'll second that.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore to approve the federal CARES Act grant. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. All right, then the next one is we have notice down here to the next page. There we are, page 26. EDA revolving loan mortgage been satisfied from William and Hancy folks, which is interesting because they seem to be doing fairly well, because they've applied for another grant and then satisfied their existing EDA loan, or not grant, loan.
I moved to have one out, but they paid out the one they had before.
Yep.
Perfect.
I move to approve the mortgage satisfaction for William and Hancy folks.
Second.
Motion by Enke, seconded by Hersberg to approve the mortgage satisfaction for William and Hancy folks. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. And the next two items, some hearings to set. We've got some requests for vacations of utility. First one is for the Fangmires out in Heatherwood Platt, and we're looking to set that hearing for Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 6:30 PM.
I'll make the motion to set James and Rhonda Fangmyer utility easement vacation public hearing for Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hersberg to set the James and Rhonda Fangmyer utility easement vacation public hearing for Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Then the next one is in the industrial park, and that is the Brenda and Leon Gerkey utility easement. And that hearing recommended for Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 6:45 PM.
Move to set the Brenda and Leon Gerkey utility easement vacation public hearing for Monday, July 13th, 2020, at 6:45 PM.
Second.
Motion by Enke, seconded by LeBeau to set that public hearing of Gerkeys for 6:45 PM, July 13th. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried. Then item... Oh, okay. I thought you were trying to attack me or something there. Police policy, use of force. This is basically just information only. I had this put on here because Governor Walz recommended that in light of everything that's been going on, that all use of force policies be addressed. And to note that policies and procedures with the police department, the chief have been going through all of our policies. And so this basically is just to let everybody know that that process is in ongoing. Anything policies and procedures, or the chief? Okay, all right.
We haven't moved through that one?
Pardon?
We haven't gotten through this one yet.
Not this one, no, but yeah. We're, yeah, I wanted as part of the agenda and noted on there, and if people do go on the website and look at the agenda, they know that it's there and what we're doing.
I think we'll probably, we have a meeting on Wednesday, so we'll probably put this one at the top of the agenda, so that it can be brought to the next council meeting.
Great. Thank you. I know you have been working hard and heavy on a lot of those policies, so... All right, then the next one is off of our update ordinance number 1533, moratorium on storage buildings. And Sean, you've suggested that we take a look at this?
I did, I guess. This was something that came up in planning, as something that we should consider. And then I was contacted by a resident in town just asking where that was at. So I emailed Belinda and Jennifer and Ron and just sort of asked where it was, and the suggestion was made that we look at a temporary moratorium while the planning committee can finish the investigation and put forth a full ordinance.
And Bill, you're still awake, right?
Yeah, the only, I mean, I shared with Jennifer, my only, you know, I think it's fine, but my only reservation is that we have had storage buildings in C2. The only way that they fit in C2 is because they're allowed in C1. Otherwise, there's nothing in our C1 ordinance that would allow for storage buildings. So it's, that's the awkward part of doing this. But if we wanted to do something fast, like a moratorium where we don't have to publish things, and we just wanted to get something started, this is the way to do it. But if we wanted to be a little more deliberate about it, you know, maybe we would want to change our C1 ordinance and change our C2 ordinance, so that storage was allowed in C2. But, you know, I, I don't know all the background, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't always understand everything that's being considered by the committees, so, so I did this, and I just want you to know that if you do, the effect of that is that, that there's not really a way to allow storage facilities in C2 until, until we get to doing something permanent.
Okay. I don't know if Jennifer or Belinda, have we had any interest in any storage in any of those two districts, that if we did enact a moratorium would affect them?
Well, definitely in C2. I have somebody that's looking at a building right now and wants to use it for storage, and that is in C2. We just approved building plans for D and D storage up on Spruce Street. So in, just in lately, those are two that come to mind. So I agree with Bill. I think, I'm not against the moratorium on C1, it just affects our C2. And that's really, I think, where we want storage buildings. I, and either of those places, I would never want to rezone as industrial, because they're adjacent to residential, and one is adjacent to the school. So we would not want that industrial. So if we did the moratorium, I think we would want to quickly have planning, you know, do their research that they need to be done, draft an ordinance that they could work on or work with, get that public hearing done, and make the amendment to C1 and C2. But we have a public hearing in there, so it could take 30 to 45 days about to get that all accomplished.
Is that on your tax statement if you're a C1 or a C2?
Not necessarily, no.
Is there a way to put in the wording under the application where it says this section shall apply to and govern all property located in the C1 central business district? To add in there, some wording saying that it's, doesn't apply to the C2, or those would still be allowed in C2 district during the moratorium?
Bill, do you want to answer that, or my answer would be?
I mean, it seems to me that that in effect, you're, you know, you're, I mean, it's not, a moratorium is stopping something, not amending something. You know, I mean, you're, so you're really amending the ordinance, and the process that you have to follow to amend the ordinance is, you have to go through planning, and you have to have the hearing, and, you know, I, I think, you know, you can, you can short-circuit that process by doing a moratorium, but the moratorium is, as I understand it, you know, really generally is intended to, to stop something, so that you can do planning in the meantime, and, and consider the effects and so forth. Where here, I mean, I think to say affirmatively that we're gonna change our C2 ordinance to allow something that we haven't said was allowed in C2 before, except here, I don't know exactly how you get to that, 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 I, it seems to me that's sort of an abuse of the moratorium process.
So is there a clear definition of a C1 on a C2?
Use your microphone there.
Is there a clear definition of a C1 on a C2?
Yes, on the zoning map.
Yep.
There's a clear definition. The C1 district is our downtown district, pretty much encompasses Washburn, James, Augusta, everything from the old Super Value Building all the way over to Perennial Bank, to the food shelf, but those four or five blocks, that's, that is our downtown district. And then if you cross Business 23, then we have, you know, Casey's is, I believe, highway commercial, and as you go out of town, that's all highway commercial. So you kind of, that is distinct on the comprehensive plan and on their zoning map. But you are taxed on the use of the property, it's not the zone of the property. So when you brought up that question earlier, there, there is some confusion on there on your tax statement. You're taxed on the use of the building or the land, not on what it's zoned.
I was just wondering how somebody could find out what their building was.
Oh, yep, I can do that in like six seconds.
Yes, Sam. So if we put a, if we put a more, the proposed moratorium in effect, is reasonable that we could have this answered within 45, 60 days?
I think it is reasonable. I did not put the planning agenda out yet, thinking that we would probably get some input from tonight. So potentially, if the moratorium was passed tonight, it doesn't go into effect till next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday. But we already meet on the... But we already meet on the 15th. So potentially, knowing from the discussion tonight, we could reword some of that C2 language and reword some of the C1 language, the planning commission could look at that. And if they believe that that's what they would like to see, they could set a public hearing. And we have to post and publish, there's, you know, public comment that can happen because it's in our chapter 36 zoning. And that recommendation after the public hearing would come back here with those two ordinance amendments. And then the moratorium would be lifted. Did I say that right?
I mean, the changes we're talking about are really simple. It's just to take storage out of C1 and put it in C2, as I understand it. That's all we want to do is just not have it as a listed use in C1 and have it as a listed use in C2.
That is correct.
So how many buildings do we have for sale right now in the C1 district, do you know? That could potentially be used for storage?
We just left with the movie theater?
Movie theater, maybe, and.
There's another one downtown, so that'd be two.
Is it?
Oh, Stockland's.
No.
No, that's sold.
Is the Color Max sold?
Yep. That one's for sale.
Pardon me?
The Color Max building, that one's for sale.
So that would potentially be one?
Yep.
I, I thought the sobriety bought it.
No. No, I got the keys.
They were, that was the one.
That was their intent, but my last phone call conversation with them, they have not moved there yet.
No.
And I don't know if that's gonna.
They never did close.
They didn't. So those two for sure. Off the tip of my tongue, those are the only two I can think of that aren't actually being owned and occupied, I guess, paid taxes on. You know, we don't have any of them that are in, you know, any type of forfeiture or anything like that.
I mean, to me, it seems like a lot of hassle to put this moratorium in place if we're only talking about potentially two buildings in our downtown. I mean, I understand the intent behind it, but I think if we could reasonably have amendments done to our ordinances in 45 to 60 days, that maybe we would just instruct the planning commission to look at that.
So this would have nothing to do with existing businesses that are using their space for storage?
Right.
Nope.
So we're, like Alicia said, we're looking at two buildings that. I don't know. Part of me doesn't like telling people what they can do and what they can't do. And another part says that we want beautiful buildings and a beautiful downtown and. Not an easy call.
This was one of the things that I believe was suggested as part of the downtown study, was looking at trying to prevent the storage units, however possible.
It actually stemmed from, and you're exactly right, Sean, almost like abandoned buildings. That's how it kind of started, but we really don't have any. We have buildings that are not used regularly on a retail basis where you have constant customers in and out, or there's a service that they're providing. We have buildings that are used for whatever purpose, as light as it may be. We don't know when they're open or if they just do online sales, or if they are only open on Sunday mornings at 7:30 AM. But their taxes are paid, their lawn is mowed, or their weeds are cut. So we thought instead of doing this abandoned building or this, we thought about changing the ordinance to go to no storage. There is a, you know, an enforcement issue with, you know, how do you enforce a building that maybe is not occupied as much as we'd like through, through the door with patrons? It, it's an enforcement issue. How do you say you have to be open so many hours and you're just using the building for storage?
I suppose the biggest thing is if you had something on out here, it would be an ordinance if somebody was going to purchase one or.
Just for storage? Yeah.
That, it would deter them?
And we could have, there's a little bit of teeth in there saying, okay, you know, there has to be some type of provided service or you'd have a little bit of teeth. But it would be hard to enforce because they could say that they're open every Sunday morning at six to eight, or, you know, every Friday night from nine to midnight.
I think knowing what you said about the fact that there are two already in the process in the C2 district, I would hesitate to put a moratorium that would impact those businesses and possibly deter them on the off chance that one of our two buildings downtown may change ownership in the next 60 days.
Yeah, and one of them already has a building permit, so their already grandfather did, whether you had the moratorium or not. But I just, like at three o'clock today, I had somebody come up to me and say, can they do a storage in this facility? And I'm like, well, they can right now at three o'clock, but I don't know about 6:30 tonight. So it might depend that purchase, yeah.
So I guess I would rather just recommend that we, that planning commission looks at this and moves on it as quickly as possible. That'd be my opinion.
So that would take no action from the council other than a recommendation? So if we, if anybody wants anything different, we would need a motion for the moratorium?
I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 15, third series moratorium on storage buildings in C1 central business district. The reason being, I think having that in place holds the planning board's feet to the fire a little bit more.
I'll second that. Okay, we do then have a motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve ordinance number 15, third series moratorium on storage buildings in C1 central business district. Discussion?
Just that I agree with Alicia, I don't want to lose the people that are coming, so I want this done as quickly as possible. And I think this just keeps everyone moving on it.
I think we all, we all know where we want to go. It's a question of how to get there in the best route.
Yep.
Anything else, any other discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, I, you bite, bite, both, I too. So the motion does carry forward to win. All right, thank you. Then on to old business, Mr. Fred here, bring us up to date with COVID-19.
So the numbers are starting to, our number of cases are starting to go down each day. I think Stearns County had one yesterday listed on the Minnesota Department of Health website. With that being said, Stearns County has decided to close down their emergency operations center in relation to the COVID crisis, so they're starting to tear that down. The email said today if something does come up, they can always reopen it. Planning a meeting with Belinda this week to go over the plan for the city plan. And then also on Friday at 11 o'clock, as long as they don't cancel it like they did the last week, we're going to do a, something online and watch webinar with Tina Smith on the reimbursement that we might be eligible for, for the COVID.
Okay. How's your hand sanitizer holding out?
Seems to be holding out good.
Haven't gotten the thermostats, the thermometers in yet. They were supposed to be in the week of the 18th.
They'll be here just when things wind down, I suppose.
Yep.
So we don't have those all city locations.
So it sounds like since you're still doing active things related to it, it's probably too early to cancel the emergency declaration or?
We still have some things to wrap up, so.
Yeah.
Possibly by the next meeting, to get that, that in, get the, you know, tallying expenses that's going well.
Steph was working on that.
We haven't started doing that yet.
Oh, okay.
Stephanie's trying to track a little bit of payables, but Tom and I have to get together on that.
Okay.
Belinda, did you see that thing about the, they've got something in the legislature about requiring audio and video of all committee meetings, and they've got a survey out about costs that they want?
Yeah. Jen saw that today and brought it to my attention.
Okay. Very good.
All right, no action needed at this time. We move on to the next one, which is the, we got the application for, a proposed application for the 2020 liquor license reduction. Comments, questions?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I think it's fine, and then we can, with that information, make our decisions.
Okay.
And these are, go from January 1st to December.
Yep, ours are in the calendar year.
So we can change that at the end of December if we still think for the next year, if we'd like to. Okay.
It seems like there maybe should be another blank in that box where it says open outdoor and then open fully, because we know they're doing a partial opening first, right?
Oh, 50%. Date business closed. Yeah, you can make the other line right on top of, cross from the business closed public, change that bottom one to date business opened up 50% to the public and then go to open up completely? Is that what you're thinking, Bill?
Yeah, it seems like, because they're doing like, they've got, I mean, they're opening for indoor service, but they're not fully open. And then they're, at some point, they're going to fully open if we want to get all the information. It seems like we'd ask a lot of questions.
Yeah, there should be one more line.
Well, then we don't know either what the next phase is going to be, if it's fully indoors or.
75%.
75% or something. So there could be additional phases in there too.
Why would that be important for us to know then? Just.
If we want to get real scientific about it, yes. If, if we want to kind of take a shot in the dark and, you know, if they've been basically shut down fully for three months and partially for another month or two, we can, we can educate it, yes.
Right. But, you know, the date business opened a curbside pickup, for a long time, they couldn't even sell liquor at the curbside pickup.
Yeah, and, and each of the, you know, we're looking at three different businesses here, really, and, and each one is different in how they've, you know, functioned. One does not have a liquor license, so they couldn't.
So should we just go with date business closed and date business open fully and make it simple?
Just, I, I would think maybe a, you know, just a description of how they're, how they were affected, you know, with.
Right, they can put down whatever's going to help us make a decision.
Just a narrative type thing.
And I think the decision has to be based, it's on the criteria. Not just a blanket, you're closed six days, so.
Yeah, and, and quite honestly, if we're looking at a, what, 32, you know, in one case, it's $100, you know, for their license, and the other, you know, 3,200, you know, is it going to be, you know, half of 1,600 or 1,500 or 17? How much time and effort are we going to put into relatively minor amounts?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of thought that we would just take that 3,200 and divide it by 12 and for each of those months that they weren't open fully, but maybe that's too.
Because we've been, they've been closed on what, three months?
Well, you know, like I say, each business has been, has been different. You know, the Legion has been fully closed down, and Queen B has been doing, well, they, Legion did curbside for a couple of weeks. Queen B was able to do curbside full time and during part of the time was able to sell the liquor. Fireside, Firehouse Coffee has just been, you know, pickup only until now with outside.
Right, but this is for liquor license, you know, so even though they were able to do curbside pickup for liquor, like really compared to what their normal business would be, it's got to be pretty minimal sales that they did.
Would it be just as easy to say the 3,200 divided by two and waived the $100 on the Corona's lanes and the baseball club, QuickTrip's open, so they won't really count in my book, and just be done?
Well, I mean, I think somewhat we probably want to know exactly when they do fully open. I think the date that they closed and the date that they opened fully would probably be the.
I think right now we're concentrating on the, the application itself.
Okay.
And, and I would suggest just some type of a narrative to include dates and.
Yeah.
Percentages.
Do we want to look at this now or when they're fully open?
Well, they'll fill out the application and bring it back when they're fully opened.
Well, that might be December.
Right.
It might be, yeah.
So we're not actually approving any of them, we're just looking at the application.
They don't have a lot of faith in Mr. Walz, but that's okay.
Yes. I'm fine with the application the way it is, with just a narrative in there to describe their, their operations and how it's been affected.
You want that instead of the little box or as part of that little box? You said you're fine with it the way it is.
Wow. No, I don't, you know.
I think a narrative is the right information we're looking for, and the format of how we get it is less important.
Yep.
If they pick it up, we can say if you'd like to do a narrative, write it on the back.
In, in that box, just put lines and narrative.
So maybe where the box is for the dates, we could take out everything in there and put a narrative in there for them to explain their circumstances.
Yep, please explain. All right. Hey, then we're on to the truck show here. We got the AMPI wastewater expansion project on page 54, Mr. DeWolf.
Yeah, just to give a quick update on that project, it is substantially complete and actually we're ready to initiate the operations. One of the suppliers of one of the pieces of equipment has to change out one of the motors.
Oh.
They supplied a non-explosion proof motor with the equipment, so that's the only thing that we're waiting for at this point, then we should be able to initiate the operation of that facility. They did complete the pavement patching as well over the past few weeks. So in your packet is a copy of pay request number 11 for that project and the amount of $140,973.19 for work completed in May.
Move to approve payment estimate number 11 payable to Eagle Construction Company in the amount of $140,973.19.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by a couple of people here. I'll give it to Counselor LeBeau to approve payment estimate number 11 to Eagle Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $140,973.19. Discussion, all favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the airport teahanger project that Ron mentioned earlier?
Yes, the airport teahanger project is substantially complete as well. The building is, is up and the electrician just finished her work last week. We're currently undergoing the inspections and repairing some final punch lists for that project. So we'd anticipate, like Ron mentioned, that one being ready for the July 1st rental dates. In your packet is a copy of pay request number four for that project and the amount of $303,586.67 for work completed during the month of May.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number four payable to Voss Plumbing Heating and Paintsill, amount to $303,586.67.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve payment estimate number four payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating and Paintsill in the amount of $303,586.67. Discussion? Okay, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the 2019 street improvement project?
Yes, the 2019 improvement project is nearing the end as well. They did the final of pavement on most of the streets last, within the last week and a half. They do have some work left to do. They still have to do the little street extension out by Teal's and as well some patching down by Railroad Street and Mastermark area. In addition, we're continuing to work with them on all the seating down there. They've done some reseating, but they do have some weed issues that we're continuing to work with them on to. on to take care of, so we will continue to work with them to address the seeding issues. So we'd anticipate that project being completed within the next four to six weeks, so. In your packet is a copy of pay request number nine for that project, and the amount of $34,121.64.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number nine payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Paintsill, in the amount of $34,121.64.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, exactly as on the action sheet there for payment number nine, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, that carried? And the next items, we got a handful of accounting and budget transfers to take care of. The first one is, yeah, on page 72, and that's $14,000 from the Liquor Fund to the Liquor Fund Capital Improvement Fund, that's budgeted. Nope, I missed one. I missed one, there we go, 71.
Page 68.
Yep, missed two, three. There we go, the bond levy transfer is first. That's $289,284 to cover those bond payments there.
I'll make the motion to approve 2020 budgeted bond levy transfer of $289,284.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve the 2020 budgeted bond levy transfer of $289,284, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, that carried? And then the next one, there are all those general fund budgeted transfers detailed on page 69.
I move to approve the 2020 general fund budgeted transfers on the action sheet.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve the 2020 general fund budgeted transfers as on the action sheet, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and that carried? And then the next one is the transfer from Fund 120, Street Capital Improvement Stormwater Fund, to Fund 537, the 2019 Improvement Debt Fund, that's 200, uh, $27,782.
Move to transfer $27,782 from Fund 120, Street Capital Improvement Stormwater, to Fund 537, 2019 Improvement Debt Fund, for the Stormwater Utilities on the 2019 Street Project.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve that transfer from Fund 120 to Fund 537 as on action sheet page 70, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and that one carried? And then the next one is the transfer of Fund 121 to Fund 111, for $1,320 whole dollars, and...
I'll make a motion to transfer $1,320 for the 2018 Chevrolet Silverado from Fund 121, General Capital Improvement, to Funds 111, Water Equipment Replacement, and 116, Silver Equipment Replacement, for half the cost of the 2018 Chevy Silverado, to be paid over a 10-year period starting in 2018.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve that transfer, item seven under Old Business on page 71, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and that carried? Trying to keep notes here, too. And then the next one is the 2020 Liquor Fund Budgeted Transfers.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2020 Liquor Fund Budgeted Transfer.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the 2020 Liquor Fund Budgeted Transfer, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and that carried? And then the last one here is the 2020 Water and Sewer Funds Budgeted Transfers on page 73.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2020 Water and Sewer Funds Budgeted Transfers as on the action sheet.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to approve the 2020 Water and Sewer Funds Budgeted Transfers as listed on the action sheet, page 73, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and that carried? And the next one is item L, ordinance number 14, third series, Smoking, Paintsill, Clearing, Indoor Air Act, and this was discussed at our special meeting over at the fire hall. And, wondering what we want to do here?
I think we should can this whole idea. First of all, this whole smoking thing came up as pretty much, what's the right word? Uh, I forgot the word now, profiling. We're profiling one group of people, again. Third time things have came up for one group of people. This is not gonna help any businesses in town. This is for one business at all. We have not considered all the other businesses and how it's going to impact them. And basically, it's after one group of people, again. And I flat refuse to be anything with, with profiling people. I can't do it, it's not gonna happen.
I'm with Len that we should say no to this. I watched the video from that special meeting, and I noted, it really did seem pointed at the folks who utilized the recovery center, and it didn't seem like something that was going to be useful for the business. I know there was a comment about having to have windows open, but that's not actually required by the governor's suggestions or the Department of Health, so I don't know why that was presented as a requirement when it's not. This, again, seems just as another way of punishing those who utilize the recovery center, and I'm, while I'm in favor of this in general, in the way it came up, I can't support it.
Is, uh...
Into the microphone, please.
The business in question, is that air-conditioned?
Yes.
The salon?
Yes.
Well, then you would not want windows open if you got the air going.
I think, I think all the businesses are air-conditioned. I don't think it was only one business that was requesting it. I think both business owners that were there were in favor of this, but, but I, I think it, it does stem from the same, the same issue, or the same, I think they're kind of pointing at the same people, I should say, but it was, it wasn't, it wasn't just one business owner that brought this up at the meeting.
But they're still profiling one group.
Yes, no, I, I mean, I'm not, I, I assume that's true. I, I don't know what I believe, yeah.
Alicia?
I, I was just gonna say what Bill said, too, that it, that's not the only property owner that has complained about this, or the only business owner downtown, and I, I think that this was also something that was brought forward on the library board, that there are a lot of people who don't feel safe downtown, you know, and so this would be a measure that we, as a council, could take to prevent loitering in our downtown area, that, you know, just like the moratorium on storage buildings, if we're going to try and clean up our downtown, this is a measure that we could take that would help that process. It's a proactive step.
One fear that I have is of, I mean, the two businesses that were here in support of this request, one of them is a bar, and a number of bar patrons, from my experience, like to go stand outside and have a cigarette. Are we going to designate a spot 50 feet away, or are those patrons going to be exempt from this requested ordinance?
Um, if the bar owner is in support of this ordinance, wouldn't that also imply that the bar owner does not want people smoking right outside her door?
Okay, so that's two businesses, what about all the rest of them?
Yeah, I did have a phone call from one business, and at, at 50 feet, that would basically eliminate smoking into the downtown, wouldn't it?
Lotteries are 25 feet.
Yeah.
You're, you're almost picking who can choose, you're almost choosing who can smoke and who can't smoke. And I, I kind of agree with Len, that's profile, profiling.
You're not choosing that, you're asking people to walk 50 feet away from the businesses.
Right, and, and you want everybody to not smoke within that area, which is pretty much unenforceable.
Or to, or to be, or to move, you know, go for a walk, don't smoke, don't just stand somewhere, I guess, that, those are sort of the options, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know that it's not enforceable. I mean, you know, I, I do agree, I think we pretty much shut off pretty much all of downtown to it, with the number of businesses downtown that pretty much would mean nobody could stand around and smoke. Does not preclude people from moving and smoking, but it would keep them from standing and smoking.
Okay, so I say, what happens with the AMPI?
Um, they can walk around the block while they smoke their cigarette?
50 feet away from the building would put them...
No, 50 feet away from the entrance to the building. But it's, it doesn't, it says right in there that it doesn't apply to people who are passing by those entrances while they're walking. It's just from standing outside the door loitering. I mean, there's a lot of places down in the cities where buildings have like a separate smoking room outside of their building, where people have to go outside and into this little room to smoke their cigarettes, because they don't have smoking in front of building entrances.
I still think it's, it's put out there for one reason, and one reason only, and it's the same then that happened two other times, and it's all about one group, that's all it is.
So, isn't that, in a sense, profiling against two specific business owners? By refusing to even consider means to address some of the concerns that they have about their businesses? Like, you're basically saying, well, because you two are the ones who brought it to us, and these are the people that are standing outside your businesses, we're not going to even...
Well, first, you're wrong, they're not standing outside of their business, they're down the street, they're three buildings down around the corner on a bench. I drive by there 50 times a day. They have a set right around the corner, they're actually, one, two, three buildings down around the corner, those people.
Obviously, Len, they are not, like, I don't even, Belinda, do you remember how many people commented on our library survey about the safety of downtown?
The safety of downtown has nothing to do with this question.
It does, because it was, that was part of the problem. People did not feel safe going downtown, they didn't feel safe taking their small children downtown, because there are people out loitering on the sidewalk.
It was in the top 10 anyway, because we did have it as one of the points.
Right, so you can say that it's just these two businesses that are in favor of something like this, but the reality is, there are other people in this community who recognize this as a problem, and who have taken a step to bring it to the council's attention. Maybe not necessarily bring it to a meeting, but they filled out a survey and they felt strongly enough to write that down on their survey.
I think the, the ordinance is, is, well-intended, I'm not sure if it's something that, you know, the, to me, the 50 feet is definitely restrictive, um, and, and I'm not, I, I can, you know, empathize with those that do not feel safe, there's probably other ways that we can help address that, rather than, you know, cutting down on the, those people's ability to smoke. And I do, I have seen them around the corner there more often than standing around. You know, they, they do, they do move around, but they do hang out on the, around the corners.
And some are people that live in the plaza. I mean, they're entitled to sit on the bench in front of the plaza like anybody else. I, I agree, we're restricting, it's legal, the indoor smoking ended many years ago, and the outdoor smoking is legal, and I, I don't have a problem. I'd make a motion that we, um, would be the right word, decline this, or payable it.
Do you want to take it?
God, I don't want to add another thing.
Um, you want to take it to policies and see if there's a way of not targeting it?
Well, as it stands now, if the council does nothing, nothing happens. There's nothing to table, the council can either put a motion to, you know, move this forward, or...
Well, it's already on their Policy and Procedure Board agenda for June 10th, so. Can we let them...
This, this ordinance has not been posted yet, so this is the first time the council has seen it, so we are, look, I am, looking for your direction if you want to proceed with this. The next step would be, I would start posting, which I already have, to sort of try to make that 10 days. It's gonna go to Policies and Procedures on the 10th, because Policies and Procedures look at all ordinances. They're gonna make a recommendation to council, the 10 days are gonna be met, it's gonna be back on your June 22nd meeting for approval, or denial, unless you tell me differently tonight.
I, I'm not in favor of pushing it forward unless Policies and Procedures wants to take it up.
I don't. There are parts of it I like, so I'm willing to talk about it in policy.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just to let you know, and I don't know if it's worth having conversations to the downtown folks, I just got in a text from one of the business owners, saying that apparently May is in favor of this ordinance, but at 25 feet, so it might be something to have a conversation with, with them downtown about, just to see what their thoughts are.
Okay, all right. And that is it for action items. We have the reports that are listed there on the city's website, the Police Department reports for April and May. Thank you there from Center Care for the masks, Resolution 2020-10, authorizing placement of signs at designated locations. I see signs have been up, offer update, the notice there of our June 18th working session, if you got any agenda items to get that to Belinda, Ron, or Jennifer, and they will handle that. And a notice that the owner proposal on the lot out in Heatherwood Platte has been declined, and they have purchased a lot elsewhere. There being no further business, we are adjourned, thank you all, stay cool. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.